With that, I'm going to call the August 20th, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting to order. I guess we're gonna read the top here. "In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12th, 2020, town of Situate public meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting is being live recorded by Situate Community Television and can be viewed live on cable television channel nine. Participation for the public hearing will be available by audio conference bridge. For audio participation, the call can be accessed via the following number: 425-436-6308. The access code is 538-960. Once again, the call in number 425-436-6308. The access code is 538-960. Questions or comments will be allowed during the moderated Q and A period following audio directions. Your phone line will otherwise be muted as you listen to the audio. When we open it up for Q and A, we encourage everyone to try to control background noise to the extent you can. I, my understanding is from the last time we did this, everyone will be unmuted at, as once. And so it's, it's helpful to get the questions and answers in if we can control that background noise. With that, we are going to get started with our first application, which is on behalf of Carl Christiansen, trustee of the Nine Stone Avenue Trust, I imagine. Requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with section 810.2 of the Situate zoning by law and/or MGL chapter 48, section 6, to allow the raising of the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at Nine Stone Avenue in Situate, Massachusetts, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20% and reconstruction of said dwelling in a location with conforming setbacks. So with that, Paul, if you are still out there, uh, can you just give us a short explanation of what's going on here?
Okay, the purpose of the filing is they're proposing to raise and reconstruct the existing dwelling. The reconstructed dwelling will have an increase of 50.4% in the gross floor area. The reason for the filing also is that this is a non-conforming lot due to the lot frontage of 66.66 feet and a lot width of 66.66 feet where the required lot width is 100 feet. When reconstructed, the dwelling will meet all of the required setbacks under the setback requirements where residents are three district. I made a note on the zoning chart that the average setback for the existing house is 23.5 feet. And we're proposing that the backyard setback would be increased to 23.8 feet. So, um, having said that, I'll, I'll end and answer any questions you may have. This is fairly straightforward.
Thank you, Paul. I, I do not have any questions. George?
No, I, I don't have it. It's very clear.
Well, yeah, I agree with the straightforward comment. Tom?
I don't have any questions.
All right. Bob, are you, uh, ready and able to open it up for public comment?
We'll find out.
Okay, I like your style. All right, with that, we're going to attempt to open up the conference bridge to public comment. Again, we please ask that you try to limit the background noise once we do that.
The person or persons who wish to speak to this issue need to dial six star. If they're using a touch phone.
We're gonna give a, we're gonna give about a minute here for anyone who wishes to speak or ask a question as to this application to press six star on their phone.
Sorry, it's star six.
Sorry. Star six on their phone. So if you press star six, you will be, your virtual hand will be raised to speak as to this application. Do we have anyone yet?
No.
All right, we're gonna give it just another 25 seconds or so to see if anyone has anything to add here. I didn't expect this would be a hotly contested application, so. See again, star six if you'd like to speak on the Nine Stone Avenue application. Nothing.
Q and A session is over. All participants are unmuted.
Uh, check out Sunset Bay. Great spot. Have easy access to all the harbor islands.
And again, if we could just try to control the background noise there on the call. Sounds like we have someone voting.
Is, is this Heather?
Heather?
Right now. Oh, it's beautiful.
All right.
We had a little chop.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like they're out in the boat.
I think we're gonna take care of that, yeah.
All participants are muted and they can unmute themselves.
Has anyone raised their virtual hand?
No.
All right. With that.
I make a motion on the application of Carl Christiansen.
Uh, wait.
Sorry.
Yes, Heather.
Hello?
Heather Babino?
Yes.
Hi, hi Heather. Do you have a question or a comment on the Nine Stone Avenue application?
Participants are unmuted.
I'm only concerned about water. I live directly next to water and I just have a concern on water.
And when you say water, what exactly do you mean?
Any of the water runoff, any, so is, I was a little concerned, is he tearing down the whole house or is he just adding an addition on the back of his house?
You know, we were at the boat show and we were seeing something going on, you know, looking under.
Sorry Heather, one second. Heather, can you still hear me?
I can hear you, but I can hear other people talking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what you can do about them. They're at the boat show and they sound very serious about that. So Heather, just to, just to try to answer your question Heather, I'm, I'm not sure what you're referring to with a pool house. This is the Nine Stone Avenue application and they are increasing the size of the home a bit? Yeah, they, they are. Putting on an addition.
So they're putting on an addition, so they're not tearing it down?
Well, it's raising and reconstructing.
Yeah, they are. They're, they're raising and reconstructing the home, yeah. They are tearing it down.
They're gonna tear this out and build a brand new one.
Yes.
Yes.
With that said, I, my only concern is water. How, um, because it, once you start digging there, that's gonna be water. So, concern is water. How do we make sure no water floods into my yard?
Well, well, they'll be required to comply with the code as to that construction.
Okay, so they just take care of that and they just pump it all out back or something?
Just trigger stormwater?
Not necessarily. We, probably if I can answer the.
Please, Paul.
We have to go to the conservation commission as well. We have to file an application with conservation and at that hearing, the drainage will be addressed as well. There's a storm order by law that will probably kick in. And we, at that point, we will address the drainage, but the only purpose of this hearing this evening is to seek permission from the board of appeals to get a finding, a special permit to allow the proposed house to be constructed on the lot in the location shown on the plan. So, once this process is done, we'll file with the conservation commission and, and once those permits are issued, they can file for the building permit.
Oh, okay. I don't actually know how the actual formal chain of events happen in this, so that's my only concern.
You'll be, you'll be receiving a notice from the conservation commission for the public hearing because you are direct to butter.
Okay, and then they're, they're gonna continue having all these meetings like?
Well, so Heather, that meeting will directly address stormwater runoff.
That's all I'm worried about is just water.
Right, so that meeting, the, the, the primary purpose of that conservation committing, meeting or one of its primary purposes will be to address stormwater runoff.
Okay.
All right. Anything else Heather?
No, but I should let you know that I could listen to everything you guys are saying for 15 minutes before seven o'clock.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, your mics were not muted?
That's okay.
Oh, that's hilarious. Oh, hi.
That's okay. All right, well, thank you Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All participants are muted.
Okay, so with that, do we have a motion?
Make a motion on the application of Carl Christiansen, trustee of Nine Stone Ave, Situate, Mass on his request for a special permit finding in accordance with 810.2 of the Situate zoning by law and/or chapter 90, uh, chapter 48, section 6, to allow the raising and reconstruction of a, um, pre-existing home on a non-conforming lot that the board find, um, that the raising, proposed raise and reconstruction as proposed on the plan prepared by Ross Engineering, um, dated June 10th, 2020, um, does not create any new non-conformities and to the extent, um, it exacerbates any, uh, non-conformities, that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, the ayes have it. Here we go. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, with that, somebody want to take on that decision?
I'll take it.
All right. There we go. And we are on 211 Pine View. Counsel, not you. All right, 11 Pine View? Yes. That is you. All right. Welcome.
I, we actually requested a continuance of this hearing. My name is Walter Sullivan.
Yes.
Representing the applicant.
Yes.
My clients cannot be here because of travel and they want to be able to participate.
Okay, um, we're gonna vote on that continuance and I see no reason we wouldn't grant it. I think before we vote on that continuance, I, I noticed that there's, there was no plan submitted with the application, as far as I can tell. So, I'm, it seemed as though if it wasn't continued, I was gonna be asked to vote on those issues without knowing the location of the wetlands on the lot and without knowing the proposed location of the home or the size of the home.
Right.
If I was inclined to vote in favor of a variance, I don't, I can't imagine how I would without knowing those things by virtue of a plan. So maybe something to keep in mind when we come back.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Um, with that, uh, unless anyone has anything else, I would make a motion to, uh, accept the request for the variance and continue this application to our September 17th meeting, which I am not going to be able to make. Are we going to, uh, we're gonna continue it to our next meeting? And with these remote participations, we are going to confirm when our next meeting will be. We, uh, you know, this is a fun time. We have a teacher on the board. So we just gotta, we're gonna have to confirm that. We're getting through these meetings one meeting at a time.
Understood.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just so everyone on our conference bridge understands, the 11 Pine View application for a variance on a lot that did not include the required amount of upland has been continued to our next meeting, which at least at present is on a date which is yet to be confirmed. Did, uh, so I made that motion?
Second.
Did you make a motion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, there we go. So continued. With that, we have our third application. Bob, do we have any idea if our applicant is here for our third application?
Which is the third, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, third application is 83 Glades Road, Oak Development and Design.
Paul Antonik.
Uh, I don't see anyone obviously identified with that. Jeffrey Hassett.
Maybe him.
Yeah, it could be, um.
Greg here?
Are we unmute?
All participants are unmuted.
We're still at the boat show. Do we have anyone present for the 83 Glades Road application? Is the applicant or the representation here?
Jeffrey, are you, are you able to hear us?
All right. You know what we can do?
All right.
All right. Do we maybe move on to Moreland's since we know their counsel is here? And then, and then double back? Does that make sense?
No, because my dog doesn't like the noises.
I think that might make sense. I don't know how we hear it without anyone. All right.
All participants are muted.
We're gonna do that, so we're gonna jump out of order here. We're gonna move to our fourth application, that of Brian and Melanie Leggy, represented by Walter B. Sullivan, who are requesting a variance to allow for the construction of a 30 by 15 foot swimming pool and a 10 foot by 12 foot pool house on the south side of the lot closest to Parker Avenue on a non-conforming lot at Nine Moreland Road in Situate. Counsel Sullivan, welcome.
Good evening, thank you, uh, again. My name is Walter Sullivan, representing the applicants and property owners. And I also have online, uh, the project engineer, surveyor, Jed Hannan. Um, the applicants are Brian and Melanie Leggy of Nine Moreland Road. And they are seeking to install a 30 by 15 foot pool, um, with a small structure in the back for just pool equipment. It's labeled a pool house. There's no intention of this serving as a house or any type of domicile strictly for pool equipment and we would certainly be amenable if the board is inclined to grant the variance to put in a decision that is solely for pool equipment. This is a non-conforming lot. My clients have owned it since 2019. Uh, they, the lot is 9,000 square feet. This is an R3 district. This home was constructed in 2006 by virtue of a special permit. It contains 3,225 square feet. Uh, my clients have, uh, a child with special needs who has cerebral palsy. As part of her therapy, it's required that she, she have Aqua training and Aqua treatment. Um, although this is a beach neighborhood, she can't go to the beach, um, without great difficulty. Uh, there is no way to put the, the pool anyplace else on this lot. It's a corner lot. Um, this is the only place it can go. So we need relief from rear and side setbacks. And so we, we've requested that in the variance. Um, I'm not sure if Mr. Hannan is uh, on the line, but he could take the board through the, uh, plan if he is. But I'd certainly answer any questions or I could go through the criteria for variance if the board is so inclined.
Sure, and let's, let's have a couple of questions about what you said. I think you mentioned the lot had 9,000 square feet. The, the survey's showing eight. I just want to confirm.
Eight is correct. I, I apologize.
No, 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 that's, don't.
For the record.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about that. I wanted to just confirm. We need to change a plan.
That's correct.
So we have an 8,000 square foot lot and then you're, you mentioned side and rear, but I think we're actually looking at front and side because it's a dual frontage lot. Is that correct? So it's a, we're dealing with a 30 foot setback there on the, along Parker Avenue?
I think that's correct, yep.
And I, and a 30 foot setback along Moreland Road. And then a seven or an eight foot setback along, uh, the unlabeled land here to the east. And we need relief from all three of those. It looks like.
We do.
Well, that's.
Please, I'm.
I do, I do have Mr. Hannan on the, on the queue, by the way.
Mr. Hannan?
Oh, hang on.
Q and A session has started.
Are you able to unmute just him?
Yep, I think so.
Like it.
Yeah, that would be a.
Is he at a motion?
Large. Okay. Should be unmuted. Mr. Hannan?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Uh, yes.
Hi there.
We can.
Excellent. So, uh, good evening, everybody. Jed Hannan with Atlantic Coast Engineering at the bank. Um, yeah, I've been listening to the conversations and, uh, yes, uh, Anthony, you're correct, uh, given that we're on a corner lot, uh, all three of the setbacks are are obviously applicable here. Um, and so as you guys have spoken, uh, you know, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot and we're, we're seeking relief, uh, from the setback requirement, uh, there's shipped enough information there, um, the understanding that we're under here is that, um, the, the family, uh, they have a daughter who is legally ADA, uh, and so there's with the pool, the idea with the pool is that there's water therapy that is, is good for her body and her condition and, um, we have doctor's letters denoting that. Um, so we're seeking the relief. Uh, clearly the, the pool and the, the the boat struck, the boat, excuse me, the pool structure, uh, in the rear is for storage of pool equipment and such, uh, and so, you know, we, we understand the geometry constraint and that this is a situation in which we're seeking relief from the, from the zoning board. So I'll take any questions you have at this point.
I don't. Well, Jed, what are the setbacks from the structure of the pool to both streets?
Sure, let me just, let me just pull it up here, sorry.
Were you guys seeing that on the plan or?
I wasn't. It looks like it's two, two feet, Parker?
It, it looks like that two feet's gotta be the edge of the, of the.
Yeah, it's not the actual pool.
The pool itself relative to Parker is, is seven feet. To the pool itself, not the concrete sidewalk, but.
That's right.
The rear, uh, the pool itself is 20, not the concrete, the proposed concrete walkway, but to the pool itself. So we're not further infringing on the, that 18 and a half that is, is existing. And then, the frontage relative to Moreland, let me just look at the table here, uh, the existing is 21.7. You can see the table on the plan, it's 21.7. And we're not further proposing to infringe on that. Uh, what we're proposing with the pool structure, in fact, the, the carpet sidewalk isn't even further infringing on that. Um, but the pool itself is, uh, 26 feet.
26 feet.
Well, really, it's the Parker side that, um, clearly we're, we're infringing on the setback requirement there.
Sure, and so just to, just to respond to that, typically how we would approach that is, is this would be seen as a, as a separate non-conformity. This isn't an extension of a wall of the house. This is a new structure and therefore a variance would be required for that setback as well. Um,
Okay.
But, all right, so seven feet from Parker, 26 feet even from Moreland and then about 18 feet, which I believe only eight is required. Is that correct, Bob? Because I don't believe that's the rear. The rear is.
If it's a side yard, it's eight feet. If it's a rear yard, in fact, it's eight feet.
There, that's true.
Because it's a corner lot, there's no.
I think the rear is just off.
The only rear is that, is that.
Which is not gonna be at issue here.
That corner circle at the far corner.
Right, so the, so the setback there is eight feet.
So the pool complies with the side setback to the east, but the pool house.
Does not.
Does not. The pool house is in variance territory for the side setback to the east. And then Jed, the last measurement I think we need from you is the pool house's setback.
Seven point two.
From Parker.
So we pulled that up here.
Jed, don't think we.
Oh, from Parker in that direction, yep.
Yeah.
I bet you it's like.
It's gonna be seven and a half, right?
Okay. It's pretty close to what the pool is, I think.
Yeah, it looks like it's just a little bit further.
Yeah, the pool house is nine feet relative to Parker. Um, no, it's, it's further away from where the proposed pool is, but yeah, that's nine feet.
And, uh, and if we looked at average setbacks on the street, I'm not sure how long Parker is or if there's anything at play there that, that gives you guys some more breathing room. We have the, we have the average setback by law and that it's 30 feet unless all the rest of the houses on the street are 19 feet from the street, then it becomes 19.
Yeah, we looked at that. I don't think it really.
It didn't, it didn't assist. I understand. Okay, I, while we have Jed captive, if I want to buy, not that we can't go back to him, but do you have any questions about the plan?
No, I think the plan is clear.
Okay.
Uh, I'm wondering, in order to reduce the non-conformity on I, the east, um, because of the pool house, whether they could bring in the pool house, right? Because isn't that, that's an eight foot to the east, it's an eight foot setback? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So that's currently a 7.2 foot setback.
That's right.
So could we, could they move that to being a slightly smaller pool house?
Hey, eh, eh, sure, I'm just throwing it out.
I will tell you, and I, I think my client and his daughter are both on the line as well. I think the answer is yes, and they, they have met with all the neighbors and talked to them about, you know, whatever gets built will work with you to make sure you're all happy. I think there's gonna be some removing of, uh, some shrub in back. Um, it is solely just to keep the equipment, you know, the heater and such, so.
Right.
I think we do have some room to play there. It just, it's just been centered, i- is really what it is.
I, no, I.
Yeah.
Like 10 by 10.
I, I follow you. And, uh, Tom, any questions on the plan before we get into the, the zoning, uh, the, excuse me, the variance qualifications with Attorney Sullivan here?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I don't, I don't think I really have any questions on the plan either. I have plenty of questions on its, the qualification for a variance here. I'm just gonna rattle some off and then we'll let you go, hit them, respond to my questions quickly, take your time and go through however you want to do, but obviously if assisting someone with disabilities and granting a variance in order to do that is is easy in my mind. If, if, if we need a covered walkway so someone can get into their home and it's the only way they can get into their home and they need to violate the setbacks, I'm, I'm gonna vote for that variance all day. I think it's a no-brainer. An in-ground swimming pool to assist with treatment, an in-ground swimming pool that is a big in-ground swimming pool with a pool house. an in-ground swimming pool that is a big in-ground swimming pool with a pool house, an in-ground swimming pool that stays there and then everyone gets the benefit of the in-ground swimming pool when this family moves out, an in-ground swimming pool that, and I'm sure we'll get into it, and I would love to hear something more than the way I'm thinking of it, but to me, provides a benefit from having some familiarity with heated pools from, at best, the weekend before Memorial Day until, if you're crazy and willing to light money on fire on the electric bill, Halloween? And then this aquatherapy would need to be received elsewhere in those other months, and then it begs the question, if it can be received elsewhere in those other months, is it so necessary to be received on-site in the months where it would be available? That's, those are some of the questions that I'm, I'm hoping would be answered. A, an above-ground swimming pool would still need some relief, but it would certainly remove, it would certainly wouldn't be as desirable, wouldn't be as pretty, certainly wouldn't increase the value of the home the same way, but it would cost a lot less to provide that aquatherapy opportunity. And then my concern about, well, if we decide to grant some relief because of this condition, it could be removed quite easily when that condition was no longer a factor of the owners of the home. These are some of the things that jumped out at me pretty quickly, and I would love to hear from you on those.
Let's see if I can, I'll try to start from the back and work my way forward. So, an above-ground pool this girl is not able to get into, um, very easily. It would take a great amount of assistance and probably some type of a lift, so that would be one of the, the detriments. Uh, the hardship here is, you know, this girl can't go to the beach, so, and I'm a pool owner too, and I know exactly what you're saying, and as, as the kids get older, it gets used less and less, but this is gonna be heated pool, um, for the, for therapeutic purposes, it's gonna be used quite a lot, um, um, by this family, um, probably a little bit longer than, than most people use their pools around here. Um, truthfully, she will have to get therapy elsewhere, but, um, this is a, is, is relieving a great hardship to this family and to this girl and allowing her to enjoy something that, according to her physician, she absolutely needs to improve her gait as a result of being, um, suffering from cerebral palsy. Um, so I, I think that is a little bit of a unique situation. Um, you know, in terms of hitting the variance requirements, you know, it's a hard standard and we acknowledge that, um, but I think this is a unique situation. You know, you do have a corner lot, which is unique, um, to some extent here, a, a small lot, um, where, where the house, you know, really doesn't allow for the placement of pool anyplace else, um, and these people have a need for a pool, and I think, you know, the, the, the above-ground pool option really isn't, isn't something that's for them, because this is something that afflicts her legs, um, and her ability to get in and out, and so that's why it is attractive for this style of pool to them. Um, so I think, I think those are some of the issues and, and, you know, we obviously have to satisfy the standard of, of the substantial hardship that the unique of the lot, and here, you know, we can't meet, you know, most of the setbacks, and this really isn't a detriment to the neighborhood, one of the standards for the variance. I mean, this is a residential neighborhood. This is a typical type of structure in a residential neighborhood. Um, in Third Cliff, where my mother also happens to live, everybody's close to everybody, um, and they, you know, these things have to be worked out and has to be unique. I, I don't think 15, the, the size of this pool is, is overly large, certainly, um, you know, we see a lot larger. This is the pool that fits in that spot, um, and it's, it's long enough that it provides the necessary medical therapy to, to this young woman. Um, so those are some of the things that, that we considered. It's certainly not a hardship or detriment to the rest of the neighborhood. It is...
So on, on that front, we're gonna have a swimming pool seven feet from a public right-of-way? The 30-foot setback is put in place to get structures and things that will be dangerous to the occupants of the lot and things that would be dangerous to motorists and pedestrians further away from the right-of-way? And we're gonna put a swimming pool seven feet from a right-of-way? I think that's not ideal, certainly.
I, I understand, but obviously there's gonna be fencing that's required by the building code and we'd certainly be willing to increase the height of it. I see that as a benefit, actually. We're not, um, burdening a neighbor on the other side. There's a great distance because of the street between us and the person on the other side of Parker. Um, so it provides buffer for the people on the other side. Obviously, my clients have to take the, the, you know, the, the burden of making it safe, and I think that's with fencing, and I think with the appropriate fencing that that can be supported. Um, that's not a part of, uh, the street where anybody parks. Um, it's not a, it's not a, you know, very large street or anything like that, so there'll be very little pedestrian and vehicular traffic, that's a one-way street. Um, so I think that there's ample protection and it's not inconsistent with the bylaws, but we recognize this is zoning relief. Um, this is a unique situation, it, it's, it's a unique lot. Um, there's no place else this can go. Um, and if, if she can't get the zoning relief, then we can't have the pool. Um, so that's why, you know, it's a hardship.
So...
Please, 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 please.
Couple, sort of related questions. So, um, the house was built in 2006 by the current owners, is that...
By special permit, so there had been a house there, oh, I'm sorry.
No, understood, understood, by special permit, but by the current owners.
No, 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 I'm sorry, no.
That's what I was trying to understand.
No, these people bought in 2019.
Ah, okay.
And I believe this board found, when they granted that special permit, um, that although it was a bigger house, it became less non-conforming because they pushed it back, um, from the setbacks.
Okay. Um, so that answers one question. And then we, we have a lot of material here about the necessity, um, for aquatherapy. I don't think anybody here doesn't think that that would be a wonderful idea, but, um, what we don't have is, to Anthony's point, um, information about what that aquatherapy entails, um, because this is, in fact, uh, a 30 by 15-foot pool, um, which is not an insignificant, um, size, um, and it, I, I don't know, I am not an expert in cerebral palsy, but I don't know what type of motion someone with CP would be doing in a pool that big, right? Um, I know people that do aquatherapy in other contexts, do a variety of exercises, most of them are very defined in, um, physical scope, right? They don't go very far, there's a lot of sort of up and down, forward, back, walking in place, that kind of thing. Um, so I don't know, but clearly we, there, it's a large pool, um, and, and it is a big, uh, uh, change, right, from, from where, where we started, um, as far as the variance, the, the requested, uh, um, variance. Um, so a, a little color to that might be helpful to help us work through this.
To the extent that I can burden Mr. Vogel, um, my client, Mr. Leggy, is, is on the line, and I think he could speak specifics to the type of therapy, the benefits to his daughter, um, and what, what would be done, and probably the amount of time that they would use this pool.
Yeah, and I also have the question, they bought this house quite recently, being fully aware of the medical condition and the needs for aquatherapy.
Right.
And, and they bought the house at substantial cost. There were certainly other homes in this town that presented the option of a swimming pool quite handily without needing relief or had a swimming pool already. If it's this vital, why pick this house where a variance is needed, sort of?
They, they were unaware that a variance would be required, and with respect to this neighborhood, um, Mrs. Leggy's parents live around the corner and give them help, um, with taking care of their children, so that was sort of it. But I, I would, um, I would acknowledge that they didn't, um, determine prior to their purchase that it wasn't an option.
So it was a, a whoopsie? Yeah. I did, I did a little research and I believe the applicants lived in town previous to buying this home.
They did.
Yeah.
Um, her, Mrs. Leggy's parents live 340, 400 yards away. So I don't know if Mr. Leggy's available to respond to Mr. Zix's questions.
And I, I think it, it will be also helpful to hear about the nature of the therapy and then also the, the logistics of where the therapy is sought when, when this pool isn't used.
Uh, I've gotta get back to that screen, I beg your pardon.
It's quite all right. Exceeded all expectations thus far.
Absolutely.
And my own.
While we're trying to get him up, another question I have here is, are you aware of any precedent for the granting of a dimensional variance for handicap reasons? Aside from access to the structure?
I, I don't know if I heard the entire question. Am I aware of any dimensional variance? And I'm assuming you're talking in Citrus or...
Uh, really in Massachusetts. Any, any precedent for the granting of a dimensional variance for handicap reasons for anything other than an access ramp? I did a little research, came up pretty empty.
Well, one of the things that I pondered is whether or not, um, well, I, I, as I stand here, I'm not aware of any.
Sure.
Um, you know, I, I know of this board having granted a variance probably a decade ago, um, for a hardship that was sort of a medical situation for a woman that lived out by, um, Wood Island, uh, Wood Island. Um, and I would have likened this situation to that, and I can provide a copy of that. Um, you know, variances are extraordinary relief, we don't, we don't deny that. We feel like this is an extraordinary situation.
Yeah. Where I'm, and I, I asked you that just because it would've made my life a lot easier, not because I expected you to have it. Um, where I'm struggling here is the relief we'd grant would address a hardship for, four months a year, say it's five, I don't think it is, but say it's five. So we got the other side of the year where it's obviously addressed in another way, and they, they bought a, I, I'm not sure they could play the financial hardship here, given where the house is and whatnot, and the pool that they plan to put in, and so it, and they, and they bought the house knowing that the hardship existed. It's, uh, you know, someone who develops a medical condition, well, they're in a current home and doesn't wanna sell the current home because that's where they live, it's, I, this is where I'm struggling, and then where I'm really struggling is then you sell a house with an in-ground pool. But I, I, I don't mean to overshadow the therapy questions, but that's, it's where I'm struggling, and then we get into, you know, obviously, if you're putting yourself in our shoes, then we get into, okay, this, this applicant, their medical condition is, is incredibly significant. Are we supposed to determine when the medical condition isn't significant enough to allow a swimming pool on a lot where it clearly doesn't belong? What if, what if, uh, what if you have chronic arthritis in your ankle? What if you sprained your ankle? What if it's, it's...
No, I, I, I understand the difficulty that you're having as a board. I would say that obviously these are a case-by-case basis, and I, you know, the board would have to weigh it on each applicant to find out, you know, just how extraordinary their situation is. Mr. Leggy just texted me and he's been trying but can't get in. Um, and I, I can't speak specifically to what her therapy is beyond the letters that you have. Uh, we'd certainly be willing to supply that information.
And again, and again, we're not trying to determine the propriety of her therapy by any means. To Anthony's point, this is not sort of our job. What we're trying to understand is the scope of the request is large, right? It's, it's very significant. Um, the, the pool is a, basically a standard above-ground pool, um, that many people will have the benefit of years down the line. It does not appear to be targeted relief for a specific situation. And, and I think that's what we're struggling with, from different ways, right? And I'm trying to, you know, say, I'm taking it from one standpoint, how severe, how appropriate is this request in this particular situation? Um, you know, Anthony's looking for, for precedent, we're all trying to figure, I mean, I'm saying...
That's one thing I was looking for. I, I don't, I don't think the, the existence of precedents or not...
Yeah, but it's, it's all, I mean, we all have little pieces of this.
Isn't a stamp on this application at all, not what I intended.
And, but it's all, we're, we're, we're looking to see, you know...
As a, for instance, while we're, and I, just, I don't wanna speak for the rest of the board or Bob, but if you're able to get your client on speakerphone and we're able to put it near the microphone, I, these are desperate times, I'm certainly willing, um, and open to that.
Yeah, I, I have no idea why it's not, why he's not able to connect, except it's possible the queue, and programmatically only has a certain number of places, uh, and right now it's full.
We have, we have quite a few people waiting to speak?
We've got 15 people.
That seems like a lot.
I, I have another option that the chair might wanna consider, and that is, um, we'd be willing to continue and submit information in detail of reports as to exactly what the therapy is, how awful it is, any of that stuff, and I could also look into precedent in Massachusetts for this type of relief.
I think...
It's very important to my clients, so I'd, I'd love to make sure you get it.
I think the more information...
Yeah, yeah, precedent could potentially be very helpful. Uh, but to give you a, for instance, and I'm happy to share these with you later on, to your point and to the questions I'm asking myself, I Googled home aquatherapy pools, and I see pictures of folks who are, clearly have a medical need for aquatherapy, who are in pools which look like very large hot tubs.
Right.
And they're, I, I don't have measurements here, but they look like they're like six by 10 at most, and they're standing up and they're walking back and forth and, and, um...
Typically, they're put in people's basements sometimes.
And, yeah, and so...
Six feet long, 10 feet long.
It seems, I would be very interested to know if all 450 square feet of this pool are necessary for this medical reason, or if we have a medical reason for a pool, so we wanna put in a very nice pool. And I, that's an, that's an issue. Obviously, you're gonna spend money to put in an in-ground pool, you'd rather have it be a beautiful pool that significantly raises the value of the home and the property, but I, I struggle with whether or not the applicant has a right to that second part. To be honest, I'm struggling with whether I have the right to even put in these small aquatherapy pools I'm seeing online, but I could certainly see myself getting there a lot sooner than I got to a 30 by 15 in-ground pool with a pool house.
I asked my client that same question, and he told me as part of her therapy, that's not what, what helps her, it is the, um, it is the repetitive and continuous use of her legs that stimulates the action, and so a small, like, that's not what she needs in order to keep up with, um, her becoming further disabled. Um, she needs like rigorous pool actual swimming length rather than a finite shorter period, uh, shorter area.
So she's, she's swimming laps and whatnot, is your understanding?
With, with support.
Understood. Um, but again, those types of, um, constructs exist.
Yeah, those endless pools that have the jets and, and whatnot, um, that's, that's, these are the questions we're, we're first to ask ourselves.
I would welcome the opportunity to sort of respond to that with some, with some...
Some more research.
Words from her, yeah, and I, and I, Mr. Leggy, if he could get in, could, could attest to that, but I, I don't think, um, I, I don't think it would be best to have him over my speakerphone.
I understand. Do you have anything else? It's, I think we probably, we need to open this up to the public, some folks have listened to us for long enough.
Yeah.
They certainly have something to say, and it might be more for you to prepare if we end up...
Q and A session has started.
Continuing this. Are you able to unmute them one at a time?
Hopefully.
This is glory, I love technology.
I can't tell if I'm supposed to talk now.
Um, who is this, please?
Uh, this is Thomas Sullivan, I, I'm in a butter at, uh, Five Moreland.
Well, let's just try that, Mr. Sullivan.
All right.
Uh, hang on for a second.
Sure.
We can hear him, so. Thomas Sullivan at Five Moreland, Moreland.
Yes, this is, uh, hi, this is Thomas Sullivan, uh...
You should be able to talk.
Great.
Yep.
Hi, this is Thomas Sullivan, I, I think, um, is it Chair, um, I, I can't, I don't wanna mispronounce your last name.
That's all right, everybody else does.
I never have it so much, Sullivan.
Okay, well, Chair, Chair, I just wanna say, uh, thank you for, for taking this seriously and thank you for, you know, considering... Okay, well, Chair, Chair, I just want to say, uh, thank you for, for taking this seriously and thank you for, you know, considering precedent and thinking about all that you're doing. I have spoken with Brian and his family, and I also am, so my, my family owns the property at Five Moreland under a trust, and I'm one of the trustees. And my siblings, two of my siblings and I own that piece of property. And we, that's been in our family for years and years and years, you know, at least 50, 60 years. We don't live there full-time. We come down in the summer. And, you know, I've spoken with Brian about it. I also am the father of a daughter who has a brain injury. She suffered anoxic brain injury. And so I, I can really understand it and support it. I just have, I have a couple of different questions and comments, so. One is, I couldn't find the drawings anywhere. So I don't know how to access the drawings and actually see where everything is located. I don't think the setbacks as it pertains to us, which would basically be the north side of the property matter. I, I would raise one thing, which is my sister would, would like to understand, you know, what does this represent in continuous operation in terms of vibration? Because she has a condition of extreme sensitivity to vibration. And if there's any way to locate any equipment, you know, a, a pool hums. So anything that, that is equipment-related could be located far from the Five Moreland side would be really helpful. And the last thing I would say is, you know, in general, we support this. We understand the difficulty of having a child with special needs. And, you know, we, we stand with, with our neighbors in this petition.
Well, thank you, Thomas. On the vibration front, I, the, the equipment for the pool looks, the current plan, which is available in the building department, which they are not posted online. They were not typically pre-COVID. That's a, that's a little bit of a reach for our town's technology. Obviously, your access to the files, now that they're in the building department, is far more limited than they were pre-COVID. I'm not sure of those logistics, but often we've been asking a butters who are familiar with the applicant to ask the applicant to make those plans available, which we've had pretty good success with. But to give you an idea, they're looking to put a 30 by 15-foot pool and 120-foot square foot poolhouse on the Parker Avenue side of the home. So they, the pump and the heater and whatnot really couldn't be any further away from your property. And Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, all, any outdoor equipment has to comply with certain sound, there's a, there's a sound regulation, but I imagine pool pumps typically don't have an issue with that, or do they not?
No, I think you're talking about something like a generator.
Okay.
And unfortunately, there is no sound regulation.
But it's, it's a pool pump. You're probably familiar with them. I'm sure there's some in the neighborhood. It's about as far from your home as it gets, right?
Additionally, because it's in case.
Okay, so, so if I'm understanding, it's all along Parker. It doesn't, it doesn't do what for me is the back of their house.
That's right.
At Moreland is the front of their house.
That's correct.
It's along the Parker side?
Correct.
Okay, great. That's, that's, that's really helpful to know. And again, we, we support the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Yep.
All right.
Shall we try the next question?
Let's give it a try.
Jeff Assett here with Morrison Engineering. I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to let you know that I am on the call for the previous project that I wasn't able to connect. That's all.
Thank you very much. We are, we're coming back to you.
Stick around, Jeff.
You're up next.
Um, hi, this is Tom Anderson, 13 Parker Ave. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, um, yeah, so I'm diagonally across the street from the Legs. The Legs have talked to us about the project in great detail. We are 100% supportive. To us, this is no impact on the neighborhood, no impact on the street. It's a very quiet street, you know, three or four cars a day at the most. It's kind of a, you'd only go down the street if you, if you live there, basically. It seems to me like a reasonable accommodation for a beautiful little girl who has some special needs. And from what I understand, you know, without knowing much about it, you know, a pool of this magnitude is, is very important for her sustainability and for her muscle tone and that sort of thing. So anyway, we heard a lot about it, 100% supportive. And in terms of neighbors, we're, you know, directly diagonally across the street, and we'd probably be one of the more impacted folks, and we have no issues with this whatsoever.
Thank you.
Next caller. No one else on the line at the moment. Who is questioning this, I believe.
So it would be star six if you would like to ask a question or make a comment?
Let me see. I have one pending question.
Sure.
Oh, come on, guys. Don't do this to me.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Melanie Legg. I'm Madeline's mom. For some reason, we can't talk in on this call.
Hi there.
Hi. So our daughter has many, many issues. One, the most significant with her physical disability is cerebral palsy. She was born with a brain injury. And she has spastic dyklegia, which means she has super tight muscles. She also is nonverbal. She also is autistic. So she is in a full-time school with very severe disabilities. We've always had a pool in the past for her, for her to swim. The buoyancy of the water with the deep end is utmost of importance for her long-term care and long-term success. If she's, during the pandemic, we've been able to walk around the neighborhood, and that's it. But this pool is, is so important for her, and the support from our neighbors has been amazing. Any, I welcome any questions right now for, for myself or Brian.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I don't know if the board wanted more details.
I wish you could be in the room for you guys all to hear, you know, to, you can't, you're going off documents right now to describe her disability. And it's, it's very significant.
Certainly. So you mentioned the buoyancy of the, of a deep end. I guess-
Exactly.
So, because we're just trying, I don't, I'm not sure if you heard us before, but we're trying to understand the, the therapy aspects that require a pool of this size, and I think it's important to emphasize, we're trying to understand, not questioning, because I, I honestly couldn't know less about this topic. But the very little familiarity that I have with aqua-
We have a hot tub in the backyard for her to help with her muscle tone on a stagnant basis. But to physically do laps back and forth, there is nothing more important to this child. In a heated pool, it can't be cold water, or it, it doesn't make a difference to her. It actually makes her muscle tone tighter.
Sure.
Melanie, could you talk about the therapy she gets, especially since her surgery on her legs two years ago?
She actually, two years ago, had surgery on her spine, which was a very large steel rod inserted in her spine, which was a therapy that recovered, has eight months to recover from. She goes to South Shore Ther-, South Shore Hospital for aquatic therapy in a 98-degree pool. We can't quite get there in an outdoor pool, but we can get to 90 degrees to get those muscle tones relaxed is the most important thing, relaxed and moving at the same time. And that's where the, the heated water and the lap is, is huge for her. If she doesn't get this moving, then her legs will become, almost, she's almost locked at a crouch stance. And if, if the legs don't move in deep water with exercise and heated water, she's going to have, the next surgery is forthcoming any moment. With those, with the hamstrings, she will be in a wheelchair. I could go on and on, but you have the doctor's notes also.
And, and where is the-
Ambulatory at the moment, and we're trying to keep her that way.
Of course. And, and where is this aquatic therapy? Where is it, where is it undertaken? Well, you don't have access to a pool at your home now. So where is it currently undertaken, or where is it undertaken in the off-season?
Currently, it's nowhere because of COVID. We have had, we always had it in our home, and it was our understanding that we would be able to put a pool in at this residence. And we also had it at her school, at St. Coletta Day School in Braintree. And she also had it at South Shore Hospital. But because of COVID right now, she's receiving none of that, but usually she's at three pools simultaneously, because that's how important it is to her therapy. At school, a separate therapy for PT, and at home, and we have a physical therapist come to the house. And when we have a pool in our house, she can, she can do this aquatic therapy around the clock instead of 45 minutes on a session of physical therapy at South Shore Hospital. She can be, she can be in the pool for three hours at a time, and that's the best thing for her, to, to avoid a wheelchair. And absolutely loves it.
How long, Melanie, will you have the pool in use, since we're kind of in a colder temperature?
We do, we have it for six months. We've always had a pool for her until we moved to this location. We open it in April, and we close it in October, and we keep it heated at 90 degrees the entire time. So she has it for six months out of the year. And if the weather is cooperative, we'll do it longer than that.
Sure. So, so just to clarify, part, is it correct to say that some of her aquatherapy includes her swimming, actually swimming laps?
I'm sorry, did you say some of her aquatherapy includes swimming laps?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Why does the pool have to be this long, Melanie?
Why does it have to be wide?
Why is it, why is it this size? Could it be smaller?
It could potentially be a little bit smaller, but we need the deep end. I mean, she is five foot three at the moment, so she needs to be able to swim over her head. And in order to get a pool, we were told, in order to get a pool up to six feet, this was the size we would require.
Right, and-
If she's walking around the pool, it does not have the same effect for her physically, for her physical therapy.
Right, and any, any research-
You have to be spreading water.
Any research into, into endless pools? The, the jets that provide the ability to swim without such running length?
She, there is no way she could sustain that type of current. She does not have the chance to do that. We have looked into it.
So my, yeah, my, my understanding with the-
She has to move, she has to move at a very slow pace, and those, those jets don't support that type of therapy.
Okay, interesting. I was somewhat familiar with those pools from some swimming, and my understanding was they were completely variable.
If I had to swim laps, I could easily, you know, take that current and get a great workout in. She swims a lot slower, and she'll drown.
Sure. All right. Any more questions for Melanie?
Nope.
No. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
Appreciate the insight.
You're back.
I believe there's one more question.
Sure.
Oh, that was, that was Melanie. Excuse me. She's calling from Anazie Electric, which is her husband's company. Okay, so, let's see what happens if I do this.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, is this Bob?
Yes, it is.
Bob, and can the board hear me?
Yes, we can. Everyone can hear you.
You are live.
Thank you. My name is Una Armstrong. I live at 12 Parker Ave. I want to say at the outset, this is really hard. I'm a social worker by training. That's what I do for my work. I have the utmost sympathy for Melanie and Brian and Maddie. However, I need to say, I am uncomfortable with the proposed request on several fronts. First and foremost, I recognize that this preceded the current owners. However, it must be taken into account that there is a serious problem with water on the property. I'm aware that letters and photographs have been sent to the Board of Selectmen and the DPW. The water which runs off the area adjacent to Parker Ave when frozen is serious and dangerous. The water goes onto Parker and flows down Collier. There have been numerous times that it forms into an ice dam, preventing walking safely out of our driveway on 12 Parker. Second, my concern about setbacks. A pool is considered a one-level structure, requiring a 30-foot setback in the front and eight foot to the rear, 30 on the side. There's a seven-foot section to the edge of the pool. I'm really uncomfortable moving forward with, with, with an issue of unsafety with this water, with, with a proposed variance tonight, and this water issue not being addressed. The water problem will continue. Further, as the pool goes in, it will further alter the drainage, forcing water out onto the street.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is John Sullivan. I'm Una Sullivan's, Una Armstrong's husband. And as she said, we live right next door. And this is not a problem that Melanie and Brian created. It was one, frankly, they inherited. And the problem really started when the, the Millias built the house that they live in now. The house was formerly, there was a small ranch there owned by Mary Waters. I think she built the house in 1946. I don't believe it had much or any of a basement. But when the Millias built their house, they put in a basement, and that's really when the water problems started. As you look at the diagram of the property, there is a spring, which is not depicted in any diagrams on the corner of their land that adjoins ours in Parker Ave. That spring has been there since there were houses on, since before there were houses on Third Cliff. It is extremely troubling to see each and every winter the ice, the water bubbles up, and then in the winter freezes and runs the entire length of Parker Ave. By the way, I heard somebody comment that Parker's a one-way street. It is not. It's a two-way street. And so that problem exists virtually all winter. I'd suggest that Brian and Melanie have done everything they can to mitigate it, but you cannot prevent the spring from bubbling up. you cannot prevent the spring from bubbling up. One of the questions I would ask of Attorney Walter Sullivan is, how deep is that pool going to be? What is the average depth of that pool? And then what I did is I took 350 square feet, multiplied it by that number, and that's the area that's going to be utilized just for the pool alone. Then you've got a skirt surrounding it. Then that, in turn, is going to also impact the water in the spring. The water has to go somewhere. And we've heard nothing whatsoever tonight about what's going to happen to that spring. Again, we feel very badly for Melanie and Brian. They inherited this problem. I don't even think they were told about this problem. The other thing that we have not heard tonight is, it's our understanding that several town officials told Melanie and Brian they could, in fact, put a pool in this location, when in fact, that is only allowed, clearly, through the granting of a variance. The only other issue is the pool house. I'd suggest that, you know, 120 square feet is a bit excessive, but that's a relatively minor consideration that can certainly be mitigated. The big, big concern, and we've received no documentation, no analysis, nothing, to show how this enormous crater is going to impact the flow of water from that spring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, do we have anybody else?
Is there anyone on the line? Mr. Brad? Mr. Brad, are you on the line? Is there any other questioner in line to speak on this issue?
Star six.
Star six, if you would like to.
Yeah, good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, so my name is Charles Bragg, and I live at number 11 Driftway, which is actually diagonal, in the rear diagonal of the house. I'd like to reiterate my concern in terms of the existing water table with the water coming down Parker Street from that property, that I believe needs to be addressed prior to any type of additional construction, including a pool. But my biggest question is, I understand, and, you know, this young girl needs aquatherapy. It's like, why does the pool have to be so large, and why can't it just be like a lap pool and reduce the width and length significantly, so the girl can swim laps back and forth? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, any more that you can tell? I appreciate you keeping up.
It's okay. We're doing the best we can. Um, no, apparently not.
All right, well, we'll see if we get back there. So I, I want nothing more than to vote for this. I have some questions and some issues. I would love nothing more than if you could show me that this pool has to be this big, because I have questions about that. I'd love for you to show me, or tell me, what happens if they decide they want to move out six months after the pool is finished? I, I have no question that this family's life would be better if they had this pool, and in much more deep and significant ways than my life would be better, if I could put an in-ground pool on my lot that is too small to fit one. They deserve a pool more than I do, no question. But I am questioning whether they deserve the pool. I personally, I'm not saying I couldn't vote for this. I don't think I have enough yet. I, I can promise you, I'm going to do some research, just because I want nothing more than to find anything anywhere on the world wide web that labels itself as an aquatherapy pool that's even half the size of this, because I haven't been able to. I, I, you know, COVID and how long that goes on, that's understandable. My questions about, why doesn't she just go to Situate Racket and Fitness or the South Shore? Why that, at least in the near term, is a good answer as to why not. How close it will be to the road, and putting the spring aside, that's a whole nother issue that we obviously need more information about, I guess. This lot is too small for the house that's on it. It already has a special permit, a rather recent one. Now we're going to put a pool on it and grant a variance, and then we are granting variances for this type of medical reason is complicated. Where do we draw the line?
I think it has to be some sort of legal precedent, something that's addressed this in some, and I'm not even saying that it's going to-
And if there isn't, I question as to whether that's indicative of, maybe it's not as valid of a reason for a variance as I hope it is.
It might even be part of some sort of special permit criteria for some planning boards. Maybe it was something, you know, it might, I think it's, it might be somewhere in land use, is what I'm going to say.
It's, there are plenty of lots in Situate where they could, they could put up an indoor pool on plenty of lots in Situate. They could put up an indoor pool on plenty of lots in Situate that cost a lot less than this lot. It wouldn't be on Third Cliff. I really want to vote for this.
We would welcome the opportunity to try to answer those questions and supplement our filing if the board is inclined to continue it. This is a very important thing to us. I also believe that we could be part of the solution to this water runoff that Mr. Sullivan was talking about.
I think that would be beneficial.
I think, obviously, it's a trespass. If we're, we can't increase or the velocity or volume, that's a trespass. We have to solve that.
I think, yeah.
I think we might be able to solve that.
I left that out, because that seems, it's small potatoes to me, compared to my other questions. Not that the neighbors' concerns are small potatoes. I think addressing them and getting past them will be small potatoes by comparison.
I think it might help us, as part of the variance criterion, in terms of detriment to the neighborhood, we could actually become more beneficial by solving that problem.
Anything else, not that I was specific, but anything else specific that we could give them if they?
No, I mean, I think, from my standpoint, I think any little, any piece of this, right? I think it was helpful that we heard from the neighbors, both positive, we'll call positively and negative for and against, and they addressed some very, I think, valid issues. I think you have some guidance from us as to the kind of information we'd like to see, with some level of specificity.
Yep.
To give us, you know, to make it very hard for us to not say yes, right? That's what we're looking for at this point.
I mean, a swimming lane's barely eight feet wide. I'd like to understand.
Right.
What's going on?
Right, and is it the case, you know, do you have an engineering report that says, I have to, I have to make it, you know, 30 by 15 in order to get it to the six feet, right?
Which, I'm actually quite familiar with pools, because I really did my research to see if I could put one on my lot. You could get a pool in almost any shape or size at almost any depth within reason. We're talking about zero to eight. In all sorts of materials. They drop shipping containers into the ground and turn them into pools.
Concrete over them.
I-
We'll address that.
Right. Because, again, if a different size, right, if we have, if the nonconformity is smaller-
It's less of a variance.
It's less of a variance. And it, it takes away, what I'm really having trouble is, these folks are putting in a very nice pool, what really looks like the perfect, we're going to have a pool pool for this property. And what are we supposed to put restrict, do they have to rip it out when they move? Are they not allowed to move? We can't do that? What do we? I, yeah. And then the pool house, for me, and I, right or wrong, I've always done this with applicants. It's a lot of time and money, and in the sense that you need unanimous vote, I'll show my cards. I can't imagine how you could show me that you need 120-square-foot pool house. Just to be honest, I hope you think that I'm doing you a favor in showing you my cards in that regard.
I do.
That's big. I have 120-square-foot shed. It is giant.
I will tell you that I have a shed for my pool equipment. It gets filled up pretty quickly.
It does, but then you want a shed to put a bunch of other crap in, and this lot doesn't qualify for a shed for a bunch of other stuff.
Yep.
Yeah. We have turned down many a variance requests for people on the avenues and whatnot, because they really needed someplace to store their stuff, except have left stuff or move someplace that has more storage. Yeah. I would love to be shown how I can and should vote for this variance. I have no doubt that this family deserves a pool.
We will, we will do that.
With, can I take that to imply that you are requesting a continuance?
I am requesting a continuance, yes.
Fantastic.
Make a motion to accept the request for a continuance, continue this to-
Our next-
September? For the September meeting?
That sounds fantastic.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, so continued. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Sullivan. Have a great night, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Bob.
Yes, thank you.
Back to number- All right, back to two?
Three.
Great, Glades Road?
Yes.
So we'll now be moving back to the third application of Oak Development Design, Paul Antonick of 1035 Main Street in Hingham, requesting a special permit binding pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Sections 810.2 and 470.6 of the Situate zoning bylaw to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 83 Glades Road in Situate, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%.
Jeff, are you on?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. So Jeff has it here with more engineering on behalf of the Oak Development and Design. The applicant is seeking a special permit binding in accordance with Section 810.2 and 470.6 for their raise and rebuild project at 83 Glades Road. The property is about 2,200 square feet in size, so the property is nonconforming currently with respect to area and frontage. And the existing house on the property is one and three-quarters stories. It was built in 1890, and it's nonconforming with respect to the front setback, the side setback on the right-hand side, and the rear setback. The proposed house will be three stories with open parking below, not to exceed the maximum height allowed by zoning, and will be designed in accordance with Building Code for construction within a Zone A, a FEMA Zone A. The footprint that is proposed is the same width as the current footprint, and it's actually shorter than the existing. And it will be positioned on the property so that the front setback is slightly more conforming, the right-side setback is also slightly more conforming, and then the other two setbacks to the other side in the rear now will conform. So therefore, the project does not create any new nonconformities, and it actually makes it more conforming. Thank you.
Jeff, while we, while we have you, if you're still on there, and the property will be coming out of the, it'll be elevated out of the floodplain, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right. I have, can you get it done before hurricane season?
Yeah. What's that?
Can you get it done before hurricane season?
Unlikely.
Okay. Appreciate your honesty.
Did the hurricane season end yesterday?
I don't, I have no idea.
I think it's upon us.
Yeah, that's right. All right. That's a good point. Uh, huh, any questions?
Jeff, that's all private sewer over there?
It is. No, I take that back. There's, sewer is not available in this location. There will be a filing with the Board of Health and Conservation to put a new septic system in, which will be, there's actually more room now, because the house will be up on piles.
Okay.
So a portion of the septic will be under the house.
Good question.
Anything else? Bob, I wouldn't imagine so.
No.
Q and A session is over.
This is one of those everybody wins applications.
Q and A session has started.
Sorry about that. Just wanted to make sure we were live with the people in the queue. I do have a question.
Let's do it. This is on the 83 Glades Road application. Star six, if you want to participate.
Kathleen Conway? Are you on? Hello. Now try. Kathleen, are you on?
That's somebody.
This is, I'm sorry, this is really strange.
No apologies are necessary.
Hold on, we have questions, that name. All right.
I imagine this is the only challenge you've faced at work over the last four months, right? The only curveball that's been thrown to you.
Certainly didn't have enough preparation or tutoring on this thing.
You've been a lifesaver thus far.
All right, I'm going to try this.
Hello.
Hello, who is this, please?
I'm not sure if I'm in the queue or not.
You're here.
You are. Please identify yourself.
Oh, okay, thank you. This is Delia Whitehead. I live at 84 Glades Road, and I am diagonally across the street from the property. And I just, I'm just a little confused, because right now the house is nonconforming, but it's, when Jeff was speaking, it sounded like it's staying within the nonconforming conforms that it currently has. So I'm just wondering if you could just go over that again. Will it be any closer to Chris Putnam's house? Does it stay as close to the property on number 85? Will it be as close to the street? I'm just kind of curious how it's going to be laid out again.
Sure. So the house and lot are nonconforming in a lot of ways. The lot area is, the lot's too small. That's obviously not changing. The frontage is too small. That's not changing. The house is set back currently 7.4 feet from the road where 30 feet is required. It's going to be moved back 0.6 feet. It's going to be eight feet from the road, instead of the current 7.4. The side yard to the north- The side yard to the north is currently at its closest 0.2 and a half feet. From the northern abutter. It's going to be moved back a foot to three and a half feet. The rear of the home is currently 14 feet from the rear lot line. It's going to be moved into conformity to 20.4 feet.
Okay.
They're with that smaller footprint, they're going to increase this gross floor area of the home by 90%. I imagine they're gonna do that by going up.
They're going three floors.
Okay. And, um, I'm not sure if this is the right meeting to ask this question, but will the foundation be piling?
I, I believe it will.
Uh, yeah, I believe we were told it's going to be on concrete piers.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. I, and, and the, the south side was how much distance to the property line again, please?
The, it's gonna go from 16.3 to 15.6, so a difference of seven inches.
Okay.
It is getting closer, but that is actually within conformance of the dimensional regulations.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you just defining that for me again. I didn't quite catch everything you said the first time around. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Delia Whitehead. W E I K E R T.
Anybody else?
Is there someone on the line?
Um, did you just ask for Delia Whitehead to be on the line?
Uh, no, we were just identifying you for the record.
Oh, alright, thank you.
Yes. Alright. I think. There's nobody else.
Alright. What do you think? No?
No one's indicating, uh, a question pending.
No one else for that application? With that, I will make a motion to grant the, uh, would we have to give 470.6 here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, to grant, anything you want to discuss on 470.6? I think it's coming out of the floodplain.
As he said, he's gonna keep it out of the floodplain. It'd be a FEMA flood zone A. Be on piles or, uh.
Yeah. I would make a motion to grant the request for a special permit finding, uh, on the, the application of Paul Antonik. To allow.
Yes, hello?
Yes, here's this, please.
Yes, this is actually Kathleen Conway. I'm using a different phone, um, on the queue.
I beg your pardon. We did lose you. Um, can we delay the vote, obviously?
Of course. Absolutely.
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, I, we are, um, in a butter. Um, I own 89 and 91 Glades Road. So I also had some questions. I missed some of the previous conversation, but one of them was regarding the piling. Um, because the question was, was it going to be concrete or was it going to be pile driven?
I believe we were told it's going to be concrete, which, um. Should be acceptable in an A-zone as opposed to a velocity zone.
Okay. The, the reason I'm asking that question, uh, the other question I had was, um, with the raising of 83 Glades Road. Are they planning to raise all of that they Oak Design currently has purchased 87, 85, 83? Um, are they raising them all at the same time?
The only, the only property that's before us and that we have any information on this evening is 83. So I, I, I. I can't say that they're not raising the other sites at the same time, but it's probably unlikely, knowing the neighborhood. They probably need some relief before they decide exactly what they're gonna do on those other lots. But I can't say for sure. 83 is the only information we have tonight.
Alright.
I'm saying, um, could I ask a question regarding raising? Do they notify the abutters when they do that?
Yes, the demolition portion of the, this is Bob Vogel. I'm the building commissioner. So, um.
Yes, hi, Bob.
The Board of Health, uh, has to, uh, get information on any asbestos content. If there is any, then it needs to be evaded. Uh, the property has to be baited for rodents. Uh, at least two weeks in advance of demolition so that, you know, get a scatter into the neighborhood. Uh, and also, uh, abutters are notified by the, uh, by the owner of the property to be raised.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I, I do have a concern, um, and maybe this would be for the Morse Engineering. Um, with the 87 and 85, it's my understanding when the house goes up on piling, the same with 83? That the new septic being put in the leaching field will be underneath those pilings? Is that correct?
Would you?
Is Jeff, is Jeff still on? Jeff, are you there?
That is correct. The, uh, septic will be partially under the, uh, under the house itself.
Okay, my concern was the leaching field. Is that under the house as well?
Partially, yeah.
Towards the street? I'm, I'm thinking that from my understanding on the other properties, that the plans were already approved. That the leaching fields are underneath. And the leaching field is moving towards the, towards the road, not towards the marsh. Is that correct?
Um, I, I don't have the other two plans in front of me for the other lots, uh, for 85 and 87. Um, for this one, we have not designed the leaching field yet. When we do, there'll be a Board of Health filing, and if we need any variances to a property line, um, then, then abutters won't be notified.
Okay, um, so the existing, the existing septic that's currently there now is going to be replaced. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, it will. They'll have a, a full new Title V compliance system.
Okay, and this particular, um, property where it's going from one and a half stories to three stories. Is that going to be a single family unit or is it going to be two condos or do you have any combination? It's a, a single family. Okay. Um. Great. So when the, the septic that will be designed and that, and that goes to the Board of Health, is that correct or?
If it goes in form of the Board of Health, um, it, it also requires the approval of the, uh, Conservation Commission.
Okay, great. Alright, well, thank you very much for your information tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else in the queue?
Well. That's a good question. Uh, I think, I think there might be anyone.
Okay. Remember the good old days when the hard questions we'd ask you were about the, the building code?
This is the last time you'll see me in doing this.
I, that is fair.
I, I hope.
That's fair.
Uh, Heidi, are you there? I have an indication that Heidi A. is in the queue. Or if that's, if that's the correct pronunciation.
Press star six.
Come on, Heidi.
Hello? We have someone on speakerphone, but.
I'm sorry.
Hello? Are you there?
Alright, we cannot hear you, Heidi, if you're talking. So. There's someone there.
Hello, you're on, you're on, uh, live at the, uh, at the zoning board hearing.
The person who is there doesn't know that they're, we're talking to them.
Yeah.
Very, very lonely.
Um. The, the number indicates 508-647-0251.
Alright. Well, with that, I am going to close the public comment portion of this application. There we go. And I'm going to make a motion to grant the request for a special permit finding. For the raising and reconstruction of the single-family home at 83 Glades Road. To be built as shown on a plan drawn by Morse Engineering and dated July 22nd, 2020. And that the board find that said raising and reconstruction complies with the requirements of Section 470.6 of the bylaw. And the board find that the proposed raising and reconstruction does not create any new nonconformities. And that to the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities, that such intensifications are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'll write it.
Thank you.
Take it.
Alright.
It's been a while.
Sweet.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. My name is Jeff.
Yeah.
With that, we are moving to our fifth application. That of Richard F. and Maura A. Conlin of 3 Sears Avenue in Melrose, Massachusetts. Requesting a special permit finding in accordance with the Situate zoning bylaws, Section 460, 470.6F, 810.2B, 950.2B. 950.2D and/or 48, Section 6 of the Mass General Laws. To allow the raising and reconstruction of the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 159R Glades Road. Alright, we're just, uh, shuffling paper here. Alright, Bob, do we have an applicant?
I think Paul was on, uh, momentarily. Hang on. See if I can find him.
George is not in person.
Paul, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we're, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Um, the applicant owns an existing dwelling at 159 rear, uh, Glades Road. It's a single-story home that was built in 1962. The proposal is to raise the existing house and build a new one essentially the same footprint. Um, this is in a FEMA flood zone, A-E. At this time, it's proposed to be installed on a reinforced concrete foundation with breakout panels. Um. We're proposing an increase from 640 square feet to. To 1,140 square feet of, uh, gross floor area. That makes it to 335%. Um, this, this site is in the Salt Marsh and Tide Line, uh, Conservation District. For that reason, we're asking for a special permit under Section 460.2. There are, uh, there are no dimensional requirements for setbacks in this district. However, under 460.2, it says that the board can allow a home to be constructed. Um, which would have been permitted on the land prior to the adoption of Section 460. I believe prior to the adoption of the Section 460, this was in the R3 zone. So for, for purposes of this application, I use the setback requirements in the R3 zone. We're proposing to increase the, uh, northerly side yard setback from four feet to 5.8 feet. The rear yard setback. To the end would increase from 12.6 to 12.7. And at the southerly end of the, uh, house, it would increase from 10.4 to 11.6 feet. The southerly side yard setback or left side yard is, uh, is further conforming. And the proposed will also be conforming at, uh, 10.3 feet. The first step back on the north will increase from 20.7 to 20.8 feet. And the front yard setback on the other, other end of the house would be approximately 43, 30 feet. The, um, what's it proposing to do against raise a house at a first and second floor? There's also some attic space which has included in the, uh, the proposed gross floor area. In the event that that's finished off in the future. At the present time, they're, they're not planning to do that. Um. Under this application, we're looking for a special permit should we need one under Section 460. Also on a Section 470.6. As the property is in the town of Situate Floodwater and Water Safety Protection District. And the increase in the size of the house, um, will be a substantial improvement as defined in the bylaw. That being more than a, a 25% increase in the size of the building. Um, we're also looking for a finding, a special permit under Section 810.2. To have a 335% increase in the gross floor area. The, uh, nonconforming nature of this lot is the lot area. Um, the lot width. And. I believe that's it. The, the lot area and the lot width. And, and also the, uh, setbacks on the north side and the rear of the house. There, there is a septic system that is proposed in the front yard. Um, that system was approved about six years ago by a previous owner. And that's gonna be resubmitted to the Board of Health to have a, a reapproved as the three-year, uh, limit has expired. We also need to file with the Conservation Commission. Um, there's no stormwater issue here because the increase in the previous area is only 2.8%, which is allowed a no date on the plan that you have. Um. In my application and the narrative, I explained the, the two hundred, the special permit for, um, Section 470.6. F1, 2, and 3, and also the special permit criteria for issuing this, uh, special permit in general. Um, I referenced Section 9. 9, uh, 50. Let me check this. I also ma- I'll reference 950.2B and 952D. That simply outlines the, where the zoning bylaw gives the zoning board the authority to issue a special permit for these uses. I, I, I list all these different sections just to cover on the basis in the application in, in that we need them all. Um. I think with that, I'll end my presentation and answer any questions you may have.
Sure.
Tom?
Uh, Anthony, well, you know, you know what I, I just noticed on that zoning chart, and I think one other place. That number of an increase of 235 should be 335. The, uh, gross floor area numbers are correct at 640 for existing and 2140 for proposed. I think that's the triple. It should be 335%.
So I, I, I disagree. So, I, I, I disagree. It's a 235% increase.
Right. It's 335.
It is 335% of the prior home.
Correct.
But we look for the increased number, so I think the plan is right.
Yeah. The chart's right, the plan's right.
But that's, that's not a problem.
I have, yeah. So, the proposed dwelling, um, Paul, how, how many stories is that going to be?
The, the existing dwelling is on a one-story. There's a photograph over there in there with the, uh...
What about the...
Photograph of the, of the Sessors map, coming from the Sessors office.
Yep.
It's just a one-story house. What they're proposing is a second story, this attic, tray above it, which will be unfinished at this time. But I include that area in that...
In the proposed.
Proposed that area in the event that they want to finish it in the future.
What about that existing deck off the back?
The existing deck is going to be removed and replaced. On the site plan you have, it's, it's going to be, it'll come out from the house, the rear house on the north side at 10.5 feet. And southerly end of the deck will be 12 feet wide. Um, as you know, the deck can go to the property line, but they don't extend it that far out. That, that proposed deck is, is essentially the same size as what's on there now.
George? Paul, I, what's the bedroom count going from to?
Are you, can you read that?
The, the bedroom count in the home?
I'm sorry, you asking about the calculation or the...
No, how, how many bedrooms are in the home now and how many bedrooms will there be in the, the home?
Oh, they, they are changing the number of bedrooms. Um, checking...
Field card, that's two now.
Right. And it, and will there be some...
The field card says two. I'm not sure what the approved septic system had, but it's a same-size house.
Yeah. And it's...
I don't, I'm, I'm not sure of the number of bedrooms in the, in the proposed septic system.
And the, and the 40...
I don't tell...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
The 4536... Paul, the 4536 that you're giving us for square footage, is that all upland?
Uh, yes, it is. You can see the wetland line at the rear of the house. That's the salt marsh.
I got you. All right. I mean, typically, we get an application like this, we see houses go up or, or if they exceed the footprint in one area, they're giving it back somewhere else. Here, it looks like this house is growing a little bit in every direction and the lot is real small and the house is getting a lot bigger. I...
Well, I mean, to, to his credit...
The existing house is 44 feet and the proposed house is 44 feet. It's also 20 feet in depth. There, what, what they did on the, on the left rear portion of the house, there's a small bump out of four feet. It's gone from 20 to 24 feet. It's a four-by-12-foot bump out with a, uh, small kitchen up. But, but they also pulled back the center of the house. You can see where the deck is. They, they pulled the existing house in another two feet and then they bumped it out and go back to the northerly end of the house.
Yeah.
The, uh, so... The, uh, main part of the house, with the exception of that breakfast hook, is still 20 by 44.
And that, Paul, that septic system's got to go in the front yard?
Yeah, yeah. I saw the septic system plan, it was approved and it was in the front yard. It was done by another firm and I suggested to the owner that they have that same firm simply, um, reapply to get it approved, to get it reapproved. We also have to run the Conservation Commission for this?
None of the non-conformities are getting closer, but we do have a 4,500 square foot lot. Now, with 2,100 square foot outside of a giant house, we're certainly seeing worse.
Oh, and he's, with the 2,100, the 2,140 square feet, just to confirm, includes the unfinished attic, right?
The, uh, proposed?
Yeah, the proposed 2,100...
Yeah, that, that 2,140 comes from adding the second floor and it also includes the attic area above it, which is going to be unfinished.
Yep.
Just to give a sec...
I was going to say, it's, right.
2,100 square, 2,100 square foot?
It's not that big a house?
It's not that big a lot, but it's pretty small.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a second floor.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, not, nothing's, none of the dimensions are getting worse.
Even though the flood zone, or anything, was just huge.
Yeah.
The left side is getting a little, a little worse, but it's still within the conformity, right?
Is it even getting worse?
Well, you said it's going from 11.9 to 10.3. But it's within the conformity. Yeah, yeah. So, it's, but, yeah, the right side's better.
Yeah.
The front side is about the same, a little bit better. The rear is, is better.
What's that on, on those streets? Right. 20-something feet, it's really...
That's the last house, right?
Yeah. I don't have to worry about that. Yeah. Get it up?
Yeah.
Get out of the zone. Bob, what do we have for the, for public comment? Any, any brave souls hang on this long with us?
Uh, well, we've still got a lot of people in the, on the line, about six people on the line, but, uh, I don't see anyone waiting to ask a question at the moment.
All right, well, we're about to open it up for public comments. Star six, if you want to ask a question or make a comment. Again, this is on 159R Glades Road.
Let's try Mr. Solfisberg? Eric Solfisberg? Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, did you wish to comment on this particular issue?
No, I did not.
Thank you.
I was here for a, a different, a different issue.
All right, very good, thank you. Uh, Mr. Conlin? Is this an issue that you wish to comment on?
That might be the applicant.
Uh, Mr. Conlin?
Yeah, this is, uh, Mr. Conlin.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have any comment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Host, is this an issue you wish to, wish to comment on?
Hi, Host. Hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Sorry, I keep, uh, getting a voice from the operator, muted, unmuted. Didn't know, I have absolutely no comment on, on this other than, uh, it looks like it's, it's well-prepared. I have no issues. It is in a butter and I wish the property owner the best of luck with it.
Thank you. Uh, this is identified only as a wireless caller. Uh, do you wish to comment on this particular issue? A gentleman or lady at, uh, 58, 589, uh, 5481?
Yep, this is, uh, Sean Murphy, we're a, an abutter as well at 149. Uh, no plans, look good, we're all set with that.
Thank you.
Can we just unmute everyone?
Uh, not simultaneously. So, this is the last, uh, the last one in, in the queue. A wireless caller at 293-9874?
Yes, that's me, Dan Carney, uh, next door, 163 rear. Uh, my only comment is that it sounds like this is in good shape. And I also heard the discussion about it feels like it's going to be a big house. I, I would, I would argue it will blend nicely with the house next door, to me, uh, because they recently, a year or so, did a, uh, an upgrade as well. So, it, it does not bother me at all. I, I like to see the investment in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Dan. Sorry if it wasn't coming through on the call. We, we were actually saying it's, it's not, it's not too big. Yeah, we, we didn't think it would stand out as a larger house in the neighborhood, was our, was our comment. We, we agree.
Good, good, I agree.
All right. We appear to be clear.
Right. With that, we will close the public comment section. We have a, a motion, quite a few...
I'll make a motion on the application of Richard F. and Maura A. Conlin of 3 Sears Avenue in Melrose, Mass. Their request for special permits and findings in accordance with the situated zoning bylaws, 460, 470.6F, 810.2, 950.2B, and/or Mass General Act Chapter 9, 40A, Section 6. That the proposed raise and reconstruct, uh, the property located at 159R Glades Road as depicted on the plan prepared by Ross Engineering dated July 17, 2020, that the proposed raise and reconstruction does not create any new non-conformities and to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities does not substantially, um, affect the neighborhood. Also, as it relates to Chapter 470.6F, I suggest, uh, propose that proposed plan as well as the filings, as well as the explanation by, uh, Mr. Marabito, indicate that this proposed construction complies with 470.
Today's session is over.
And also, as it relates to Chapter 2, Section 460, the situated zoning bylaw, I move that we grant the special permit. Find that this will not adversely affect the natural character of the area in which this land, um, is located.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Here we go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night, Paul.
Thank you, thank you, Paul.
Good night, bud.
Uh, with that, I think, uh, the board needs to have some coordination about the, the time and place and logistics of our next meeting. And, uh, but I, I don't believe we have any minutes to review tonight. And I think that may conclude our evening.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
You can, uh, shut it down. And you can hang up on the call.